About work session, quickly as we can. All right, board members. Let's go ahead. Audit Committee has a couple of items that we would like the board to help us with. The first is to take a look at Regulation 1410. And the Audit Committee has looked at it several times. And thanks very much to the AG staff and also, most especially, Mr. Foster, for going over this many times until it was, until the Audit Committee felt like it was ready to go. And we do now. And then after we talk about Regulation 1410, I think we're due to have a conversation about direct reports of the Auditor General to the Board. How often we want that to happen and what the conversation would be. And with the new AG coming in, probably all we'll be able to do today is agree on some sort of guidance. And then I assume the new AG will actually put some meat on it. But let's start with Regulation 1410. What this is, it's a regulation, right? So it directs staff throughout the school system, or not directs them, but gives them some guidance throughout the school system on what to do regarding reporting and investigating abasement, fraud, waste, abuse, or other financial wrongdoing. So it's partly related to the Office of the Auditor General, but it's actually system-wide. So again, I want to thank Mr. Foster for all his help on this. Did I miss anything? Do we need another, any more introduction?
No, I think you've fully summarized it. It's a regulation that really provides guidance throughout the organization, not only to the Auditor General, but really to all department heads and other levels, from the School Board to the Superintendent on down.
Thank you. Do any board members have any questions or comments? Yes, Mrs. Strauss.
I will just comment that this is very detailed. I think it's appropriate. I know Mr. Foster and I know our AG office and staff have been working on this for a very, very long time. So you've given a lot of thought to this. And I think that it also combines thoughts and directions that were in other places. But I think this makes it very clear as to the relationship and how this should all work. So, thank you very much.
Okay, yes, Ms. McLaughlin.
So I know everybody would love it if we gained all this time back into the work session. But I guess I was hoping, not just for the Board, but even members of the community who may watch this work session and just want to understand, is there just sort of a high-level summary, maybe, Mr. Foster, that you and/or Ms. Weatherman could just explain? What is the value of this regulation? What, how do we feel this will enhance operations within the system? And why it's then a good thing for the Board to demonstrate its support for the regulation? Because, and I will note, this is an unusual regulation in that we typically, regulations are under the purview of the Superintendent. But because the Office of Auditor General is under the auspices of the School Board, this is our regulation. It's not the Superintendent's. And so we own it.
Thank you. I actually brought that up at the Audit Committee meeting. And I don't see it here, but we did discuss that somewhere on this regulation, we would note that this would be a regulation similar to the SRNR that would not be changed without School Board approval, given the fact that it, one of the key positions regulated in this fraud, waste, and abuse regulation is our employee, the Auditor General. So I guess I still would like to see that there. And I'll let you respond to Ms. McLaughlin's question. Then I have some comments as well.
So I'll start, Ms. McLaughlin. And if Ms. Weatherman wants to add anything, certainly I encourage her to do so. And so, without going through the regulation line by line, I'll say this. The regulation needed to be updated to be consistent with the way that the Board has really reorganized the role of the Auditor General within the organization to be a direct report to you all and really have additional responsibilities beyond what were previously in place. And so, to further that, just to give you a couple of examples, the definitions section of the regulation has been updated to really broaden the areas that the Auditor General's office is responsible for and has provided more detailed definitions of fraud, waste, and abuse to include not only the original definitions, but, for example, has been broadened to include under the abuse, which is Paragraph D at the bottom of Page 2, or bottom of Page 1 onto Page 2, to include reputational injury to the organization. There were also, there was identified as a need to provide clarification as to what the expectations of the Auditor General are if there's an investigation into members of the School Board, Superintendent or Superintendent's office, as well as leadership team, and how those investigations should be conducted. And then, in addition, there's also an emphasis placed on working with the Human Resources Department, who have their own investigators on staff, rather than trying to bring in additional investigators and duplicating effort, as well as working with Division Counsel's office where appropriate. So with that, I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Okay, Ms. Huff, did you want to?
I guess I would just ask colleagues who aren't on the Audit Committee to, you know, the fraud, waste, and abuse, it kind of took me a while to wrap my brain around where this fit in to all of the conversation we've been having about the Auditor General and the difference between the policies and the regulations we're creating. And the fact that this is a regulation on fraud, waste, and abuse, and because that runs through the Auditor General office, it thus involves kind of dictating more than we usually would for a leadership team position. And so I would just encourage my colleagues who aren't on the Audit Committee to look specifically under the parts that, its roles and responsibilities, which is 4A, Auditor General, just to make sure that you're comfortable with it, that you don't have any questions about it, that you would want us to consider before going forward and voting on this. I do appreciate that Mr. Foster took our feedback and took out many areas where it was a direct reporting to Division Counsel, except in a situation where it involves leadership team, but also there's a caveat that outside counsel could be consulted instead. Discussion. So anyway, that would be my request. I would love to hear feedback offline, if appropriate, on any questions or thoughts you have on this piece before it comes to vote. And I thank you to Ms. Hines and Ms. Evans for getting it on today.
Thank you. Mrs. Schultz, followed by Ms. Evans.
I guess one of my primary questions, and this is, you know, tough as we wrestle with, you know, our third employee, if you will, is how does this take on it get guided by legal counsel in your estimation? If there is a report under this, how do you separate a report that requires an investigation of acts by potential employees of the Division under the Superintendent, which is going to be everybody except three? Getting legal counsel, like, where does the role of legal counsel come in to a Board employee who's not the Superintendent when the legal counsel works for the Superintendent? I guess is my question.
Okay, so, not to get down into the minutia of the ethical requirements for Virginia lawyers, but I think this is a key point, and I'm glad you brought it up. I am the legal counsel and have a legal obligation to the organization. Okay, so then the question is, what is the organization? The organization consists of its key constituent parts, which are the School Board, the Superintendent primarily, and the leadership team. And so, in any issue that's brought to me or my office, our primary lodestar focus is what is in the best interest of the organization? Okay? To get, I think, the point you're getting to. What do we do in the event that there's an issue brought up about members of the leadership team or the Superintendent? Our obligation is to, at that point, the organization and the School Board, and so we report that to the School Board. Okay? And so that's just kind of the general guidance. And that applies to any employee. Again, not only Superintendent, Leadership Team, but down to bus drivers, I mean, everyone. And so that's how we approach, you know, all issues. And we would approach any issue that was brought to us.
So, so the way this is written, you feel that the investigation that may be warranted by the Auditor General, if it is something that is under the Superintendent's purview, that it is well-provided for, even if the Superintendent has, that's a very difficult question to ask. So if to, and I say the Superintendent in a generic term, okay? So that means that side of the House. And something is leading into an investig, where it's reasonable, I forget where it says here, where is warranted. So if it's determined to be warranted, does that not create a conflict of interest between what has been set up on the organization's side of the House that's operational versus the organizational side of the House that's governing? And where is the reconciliation for this person that's, you know, this role that's floating kind of in-between, you know, that which the Board is seeking, but maybe looking into that which the Superintendent was seeking? Do you see that there's, like, is there, you don't see that there's?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question. I mean, and so I
Well, if someone in the Superintendent role has sought something that is, you know, in the best of the organization, and someone is carrying that out operationally, and that leads to an investigation, then how does the investigation get legal, and the School Board get a different degree of counsel from the same office under this? Or it's just going to be on a case-by-case basis?
Right. I mean, any ethical consideration is on a case-by-case basis by definition. But just to play out your hypothetical, and so, under the regulation, if the Auditor General's office gets a complaint in on a particular issue, as provided, Auditor General's team consults with me and my office. You know, if we conclude, okay, we, as the lawyers for the organization, need to bring in outside counsel, given our previous work, we will do that. We've done that in many previous instances, as you know, and it just, it depends on the particular facts of each case as to whether, you know, we need to do that.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you for your work on this. I am wondering, is there a redline version of this somewhere? I'm only seeing, is it on there? I didn't see it.
No, I don't believe that we uploaded that for today's work session, just to try to keep the paper to a minimum. But certainly, Ms. Evans, if you'd like a redline version, we can get that to you.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. So I am looking at the portion that Mrs. Huff mentioned. I do have a couple of questions from, it's 4A? Under responsibilities and Audit, roles and responsibilities, page 2, page 2. So, to my eye, and I am coming to this a bit fresh, more so than if I were on the Audit Committee, it appears to me, but correct me if I'm wrong, that we would have more of these investigations being done by the AG rather than HR. Currently, don't we have most of these investigations done by HR? Is that?
I'll defer to Ms. Weatherman on that.
That wouldn't actually change what we're doing. It actually goes in the other direction. Right now, what we're doing in trying to abide by these changes is anything that crosses our desk or comes through the hotline that has a personnel component to it. In the past, we would notify HR and then we would work with them, but we would do the investigation. Now, I'm forwarding it all to HR, and they're handling everything personnel-related, and we're doing non-personnel, especially when it comes to that conflict of interest because there's some iffy areas. But then we assist them where needed. So it really wouldn't change the volume of work being done by the AG's office. It's still going to be the normal split that we see now.
So you're saying that you now, you now give it to HR and they do the bulk?
They're driving, they're essentially directing how we're going to look at some of the personnel issues that are crossing. For example, I got one dealing with conflict of interest. And they've been dealing with a lot of that across the board. So instead of duplication of effort, I forwarded that to Mr. Ramey. And then he works with his investigators and determining, you know, is this something that we need to continue to move forward with? And if it's something we can assist with, because we have additional information, we do that. So the working relationship, for the most part, remains the same. We're just taking a more active role, instead of going straight to the investigators. We're taking it to the Assistant Superintendent of HR before going to the investigators to make sure the chain of communication is there.
I see, okay. And then when it talks about its sentence, I think maybe it's even just the sentence, second sentence, where the Auditor General determines in writing that the results of the preliminary review and so on and so forth, in writing, to whom?
That's us documenting the process. For example, we get something through the hotline. We write our notes and sit down and document all of the facts. And if it looks like it needs to be investigated further, we sit down with the investigators in Human Resources and talk about what process needs to take place from there. So it's not, it's actually a work paper writing. It's not a documentation that's provided to any particular individual. It's part of our just documentation process.
So I guess I'm thinking that that should be clarified, that to whom the Auditor General provides this written report? Because it does say, the AG determines in writing, indicates that an investigation by the Auditor General is warranted.
Could I suggest an amendment?
Sure. And I guess I'm thinking because the Auditor General reports to the School Board, shouldn't, I'm throwing this out there to the Audit Committee primarily, shouldn't this go to the Chair of the Board or the Chair of the Audit Committee?
We discussed this in Audit Committee. And according to the office, there are so many little things or things that they do and they take care of. And to bring every one of those to us would be overly burdensome and unnecessary was my recollection of the conversation. Right, so, but to Ms. Evans' point, is it worthwhile to, for the Audit Committee to see the log every quarter, every something?
Well, I guess that's where I'm going. If this is really in writing to HR, if that's really who, I mean, is it now in writing? It's not. It's for your own internal use?
It's for our internal use to determine what steps need to be taken. For example, something in writing that I did this morning. I got a complaint about FCPS vehicle. I documented the complaint, and it dealt with using a vehicle out of the county on a weekend. I forwarded that complaint to facilities to do some research on it because most of the time, they're going to know who the vehicle belongs to, what it was being used for, and then they report back to us. So I documented that in writing in our files. They will then respond to us, and we can close out our files if the response is appropriate. Where this becomes a little bigger, and I think will have a bigger impact, the little ones don't concern me, providing you, this is, this came across our desk. This is how we handle it. And the log is in summary form. We have the details to back it up. But let's go back a couple years to the situation we had with one of our middle schools. That came into the internal audit or the Office of the Auditor General. We documented the information that was provided. We pulled in the Human Resources investigators. We brought all of that in so that the investigation could go in the fashion that it needed to, because that was something that was going to end up being criminal. Had we provided that information to the Board, the question then becomes, the Board has personnel action or has to approve personnel action. Would we have jeopardized some due process or otherwise? And this is a question for both Mr. Foster and Mr. Ramey. By bringing that type of information to the Board on an information basis, are we putting the Board in a position of knowing information that technically may not need to be known or should not need to be known until the Board needs to take action?
Well, that's a very good point. And I guess what, then, in that case, if this is in writing for your own internal purposes, perhaps that needs to be spelled out there, that it's, that it doesn't go beyond the Office of Auditor General, just so people don't expect to see this on the website someplace. And then I think we should probably discuss what happens to this log. I would think that the log at some point should, if possible, go to the Audit Committee for them to just review where you are. And I hear what you're saying about every little thing. You know, they don't need to review every little thing, but I would think the Audit Committee might want to review that log. Did you discuss that at all in Audit?
We did not, but can I, did you want to speak to that? I think the only, go ahead.
I would not suggest that the Audit Committee wants to go line by line through a log. It really, that's a bit of micromanagement that I don't think we need to do, especially with the breadth of reports that come to the Auditor General's desk. But if there is a concern about accountability or metrics, then the Auditor General has put forth metrics in the past that says, you know, we've cleared, what you could do is put a metric that says, within 72 hours of a complaint coming in, there is a plan of action. And then, you know, of how that complaint will be resolved and then closed out. And what could be reported to the Board would be, you know, we've completed 98% of those on time and, you know, so more of a a process management metrics, metric, rather than every individual complaint. Because I think that we do raise some liability concerns if every single complaint gets shared with the Board members because we may have, there are four of us on the Audit Committee. We would have to recuse ourselves if it came to us.
Well, that's fair.
So, you know, typically in corporations, what you would do is have the metrics, performance metrics, but not the individual bits and bobs. One of a technical term.
Well, Teresa, I'm sorry, Teresa had a comment too. That's okay.
May I suggest we go possibly, and this is something we would need to speak with the new Auditor General about how they'd want to do this, but recall, we used to provide the Audit Committee and then the Board would get them through the Friday memos or through the Audit Committee Chair, a quarterly report of the activities of the office. Where this report not only listed, these are all the reports we issued over the quarter and the status of all of our work, but one of the last items in this quarterly report was fraud, waste, and abuse hotline management assistance. And we would provide a high-level summary of the types of things we looked at. And these things usually take one to two days. They were cleared. But if there was an item that was taking additional time, we would provide a summary of, you know, there was a complaint that came in. It is regarding a conflict of interest with an employee. We're working with Human Resources on getting a final disposition. And provided it at high level, instead of bringing the actual log, I don't have a problem bringing the log, but what I'd like to do is let either Mr. Foster or Mr. Ramey review the log to say, can this become a public document? It's a lot of detail where we're tracking who we sent it to, who acted on it. And I don't know if that's something that really would provide you the information you're looking for.
I think that's a good suggestion, Ms. Weatherman. So would we need to incorporate that into this reg or?
Well, maybe, if you're okay with this. The next thing we're going to talk about is reporting directly by the AG to the Board. So we could talk about having quarterly reports that would include this kind of update. Does that make sense?
And so I guess I had one other question. I do think that we need to clarify this in writing, even if we just say determines, you know, in an internal written document, something like that. I do think we need to clarify what that means. And then my last question was, that would be fine too. Yeah, maintain a confidential log. At the very end of that section, number five, prepare a written confidential report to the Division Superintendent, Division Counsel that presents all findings, conclusions, and recommendations for corrective action. Wouldn't that also be the point at which we would want them to report to the Board?
Mr. Foster, do you see that on Page 3A5? Yeah, there you go. So the question Ms. Evans has is, that number five, shouldn't the School Board be included in that? Does it depend on things?
Well, that's my question, yes.
I think it depends on things. And to the point that was just raised a minute ago. I mean, one thing that we do need to be careful about is if the report includes information about a teacher, for example, who then may have or pursue a grievance or other appeal that would ultimately end up in front of the School Board. We don't want to, you know, taint the entire Board. And so I think we're going to have to handle that on a case-by-case basis.
Well, so I do think that at some point, I mean, we have to figure out how the Board hears about these things. So is that also, is that an agenda item, Ms. Hines?
I think for today, after we look at this, and we're going to talk about, you know, regular reporting from the new AG, I think our goal today is just to give general guidance to the new AG and then probably have a more detailed conversation with that person.
Well, perhaps then with number five, keeping in mind what Mr. Foster just told us, perhaps add something that says "and as appropriate" to the School Board.
I think that works if we just added "and as appropriate" to the School Board.
Okay, that work? That would be great if we could, I mean, I guess we need to have a show of hands if people want to do that, but
Can I ask you, what's the definition of appropriate?
Well, that, I think
And determine
I think it would have to be determined by
Or the Council.
I think it would have to be determined by the AG and the Council because we're just hearing from Mr. Foster that there are times when it would be inappropriate because we're going to have to have a ruling. And I would think, well, I'm just kind of talking off the cuff here, obviously. But the reason that we were told we shouldn't just put the School Board in there, period, is because there are times when it would not be something that
Well, my only question is, don't we decide, I mean, don't you go from the general to the specific? This is a policy? And then, oh, okay.
Yeah. And so with those two changes, I'm fine with this section. You know, but I think we probably need to get, see if the Board agrees with
Yeah, so those two changes, the one being that we just make clear the written record is an internal record, whatever that language is. Everybody who could live with that, show of hands? Just changing, so that's up on Page 2. All right, and then number five there, just add something along the lines of, "and where appropriate to the School Board," and "as appropriate to the School Board." Show of hands, who can support that? I mean, I think we are leaving "as appropriate" out there hanging, but, you know, I don't know that we want to spell out every detail here.
I mean, I'm fine with that. I didn't put my hand up. I'm neutral, but I guess it's better to be slightly more, yeah.
All right, thank you. I have Ms. Corbett Sanders. Did you have more you wanted to talk about?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Evans, you weren't finished. Okay, thanks.
I just wanted to first thank both General Counsel and the Auditor General's staff for all of the hard work that they've put into this. It has been a grueling process at times, but it's one that you all stuck with us and really helped us. And as a result, I do believe that we have achieved the goal of ensuring that this regulation preserves the independence of the auditor
of the Auditor General Shop while recognizing the natural tension between the role of an Auditor General and the organization that they perform audits of, while at the same time really fostering a spirit of collaboration and cooperation between the Auditor General Shop and the organization with the goal of continuous process improvement. And so I think you've achieved that. I also very much appreciate that you have put in the language regarding the reputational risk associated with activities, because perhaps in no greater place than the education of our children and creating an environment that allows our children to get the best education possible, should we be concerned about preserving the reputation of the system? So thank you very much for that. And I do support those comments. I do look forward to the conversation about reporting out from the Audit Committee to the full Board, because one of the things that we've seen is that the Auditor General Shop has quite a bit on its plate. And there are things that you all do that are important to report out to the whole Board, but there are also things that are frankly, day-to-day activities that should not come and take up the time of this Board. So I appreciate what you're doing. Thank you.
I have Mr. Moon and then a go back.
I have some nitpicking questions. Please forgive me. That since Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned about reputational injury, I know that is included as a part of that abuse. That that's a reputational injury to the school division is a part of that, correct? And also, I think right below, I'm looking at page two, section E, it says that injury needs to be measurable as well as both substantive and consequential. I don't know what they are. Could you explain what they mean?
You're asking what does?
Yeah, what is a reputational injury which is substantive and consequential?
Right. The, I have point or the issue we were trying to address there is, the Auditor General's Office, in this organization, or really any organization, is focused on helping the organization improve and addressing shortcomings. I mean, in, you know, a very concise definition. And to that end, having the Auditor General's Office working or focusing on things that are not substantive and not consequential don't help the organization, number one. And number two, are a waste of resources. So that was the purpose of putting in that paragraph E, was to focus the Auditor General coming in, that this is what the expectation is. It's not to go down every rabbit hole, no matter how trivial it may be. It's to focus on things that are substantive and consequential. Ms. Weatherman, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I don't want to belabor on that, but I still need to ask you, you know, one further question. For example, principal goes out and talks bad things about our school system. School Board member goes to the community and says bad things about our school system. Is that, is that reputational injury to the school division substantive and consequential?
The purpose of adding the reputational injury language in paragraph D was not to try and limit individuals' First Amendment rights, okay, which they have. It was directed more towards processes or procedural shortcomings that are in place. Give you an example, just a hypothetical. We have a program in place that is losing, is not being run efficiently, is losing millions of dollars per year for the organization. That causes reputational harm to the organization. That's what it's directed towards. And the AG's Office would come in and identify that, come up with suggestions to improve that. And so that is what it's directed towards. It's not directed towards individual employees of the system making statements that attack the reputation of the system or question the reputation of the system. I think as a legal matter, we would be hard pressed to try and limit employees' First Amendment rights.
Okay, and I, besides, I'm going to go to section E. I think that is under paragraph four, roles and responsibilities, and E. I'm sorry, before we go to E, I was looking at actually, under A, Auditor General. This is the second full paragraph on page number three, starting with, "if warranted, any investigation shall be conducted without regard to the employees and school board members, length of service, and process." I do understand that part. Now, question has to do with the next one. First question has to do with the next part. Findings of fraud, waste, and abuse shall be responded to by management and reported to the Department of Human Resources. Question number one, if the investigation is against school board member, does school board member have a right to respond? Because that's not included, it's the management.
I think that a school board member or any member or official or employee of the organization, they do not need to exclude it, absolutely not.
And investigation against school board member, that's going to be reported to the Department of Human Resources? I don't see the rationale for that, because school board member is not an employee of a school system. So why that should be reported to the Department of Human Resources?
Yeah, that's a fair point, Mr. Moon. I mean, the focus here was.
I understand the focus, but I just.
Yeah, and I appreciate the scenario. I think it could be addressed with an additional sentence or phrase that clarifies that it would not be.
Thank you. And then, and then I'm going to go down to E. But that's on page four. I forget what I was going to ask.
Want us to come back to you?
Okay, thank you, thank you, please.
Okay, Ms. Huff, did you have a follow-up?
I did, just as I put a cracker in my mouth. I appreciate these kind of fresh eyes on this, because one thing I had not heard until today was that due to this draft and regulation, that there's been a change in practice to how the Office is receiving information and then where it's being funneled to. So, sorry, I still have a cracker in my mouth. So I guess I have some questions that go to the independence of the Office. If now we're sending, and I understand personnel, and if we could go back up to where it mentions, school board, yes, here, that's perfect, thank you. Under A of Auditor General, I can understand personnel going under HR, I understand that. But this paragraph actually says, "or FCPS assets." And so that means we, the way this is written, that HR is being, that's being funneled. And I have a concern for the community that they now feel if something is being sent to the Office of Auditor General, the first line of defense then is going through HR. And I think that does compromise independence. And then the second piece of that is, what if that personnel is under the Department of HR? Again, how are we ensuring independence for our community, which is the whole purpose of why it goes through the AG Office?
The AG Office is funneling those items to the same people we've always funneled them through. We've always worked very closely with the HR investigators. And we've had, if it wasn't HR person working with the HR investigators, unless it was one of them, it's the same independence that we've always had. The only difference in our reporting now is I'm including the Assistant Superintendent, so he is aware of what is going through his investigators. Before, I went directly to the investigators. So I'm not bypassing that leadership point, but it's not being shared with anybody else. So we really haven't done anything other than add a notification piece in there. We're still doing the work as we did before. If it's something that they think they should take the lead on because of what they're doing, then they do, just as before. If it's something that we take the lead on, then we do that with their advice and guidance, because if it ends up being a personnel issue, they need to make sure we're following what we need to so that the personnel issues can be addressed properly.
But you and the staff in OAG feel comfortable that this gives you the latitude to take it, take on the pieces you need to take on and investigate appropriately?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't think we've tied our hands at all. We've just, I've just added that layer of notification in there so that the Assistant Superintendent of HR is aware of what's happening, because that wasn't there in the past.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other hands, I did want to return to just one question that Ms. Huff asked. And I do recall the Audit Committee talking about this regulation being different from others and wanting to see that any amendments to the regulation would come to, I guess, the Audit Committee or the Board through the Audit Committee. And I don't, I don't remember if we said we wanted that added in here, but I don't see it in here. So is there, I mean, could we add an item seven or something, amendments? And then, does that make sense, Mr. Foster? Is there a problem? Because ordinarily, in the ordinary course, when regulations are changed, I think the School Board is notified somehow of that, but maybe we're not even notified.
Right, I mean, we can add a sentence or two that provides for that. I mean, there's no legal problem with doing that. You know, as Ms. Huff said, it is analogous to the SRNR. I mean, this is a position that reports directly to you. And so certainly we can make that change prior to the first reading at the School Board.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is everybody okay with that, just adding something that says amendments to this regulation would come to the Board? Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you very much. I think we're done with that. So although, Ms. Weatherman, would you hang around for just a minute? If you're okay? Because you may be able to help us with the next part of the conversation, which is how and when and why the Board would like the Auditor General to come and report directly to the Board. We never really did set all this. And my own feeling is, you know, we would always like to hear from the AG about anything and everything, right? But we also have limited time. So this is really a question of how often and what sorts of things would be reported. I'm going to throw out there, because we already talked about it a little bit, the idea of a quarterly visit. And then if everybody's basically okay with the idea of quarterly, what would be on that agenda when the AG reports to the Board? I think there could be regular kind of reports that go on, but maybe also an opportunity for the Board to hear more directly about certain audit reports that kind of rise to an attention level. But that may be different, you know, every year. So, I don't know, do people, we've been sort of talking around this for a while. Do people have any thoughts? Karen?
Obviously, we love to hear from the Auditor General Shop. But one of my concerns is that we don't want to, in the essence of time management and how many different things come before us, I would actually like to have as part of our annual audit plan, a clear delineation of what we want the Auditor to come to the Board with. And then perhaps maybe twice a year, rather than four times a year, have our Auditor General come and just kind of do a, an open discussion with us. The reason I say that is, for example, and I know you all do great audit, you know, local activity funds audits. And I know you do some audits that are great, but they have no findings or observations. And so the impact, the real, either reputational risk impact or the dollar value impact to this Board is de minimis. And so I think that rather than us putting in a fixed requirement of once a quarter, I would rather have a, you know, for example, some of the audits we've already seen. We know some need more work, but we also know that some would be valuable to come before the Board. And so I would just rather err on being more focused as to when we bring the Auditor General to this Board.
Okay, so I'm just going to reflect what people are saying. I hear you saying not necessarily four times, maybe more like twice.
Right.
And you're also suggesting that we put that expectation in the audit plan.
Correct. That clearly defines which activities will come, will the new Auditor General bring to the Board to brief us on.
Okay, Dahlia?
Mine is more a little bit of a question, I guess, for Superintendent as well. I'm wondering how the Auditor's plan and presentations would or were not aligned with possible budget task force work? Now, task force is going to maybe be, if I understand correctly, looking at specific areas? So maybe when that does align, it might be interesting to have that be, inform their work or inform us in conjunction with their work?
Yes, I would agree. I think it can support and supplement some of that work. Obviously, we would get recommendations or considerations from the Audit Office that could be helpful and useful to a budget task force.
Okay, so I guess targeted, as Ms. Corbett Sanders says, and within that targeting, including the work of the budget task force. And, okay. I'm not sure about two, twice or four times a year, but in a targeted manner.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz.
I think that if we put into, into practice that the expectation is that one of our three employees, we only want a formal report on biannually, I ask bad, personally. I think it is reasonable to have a quarterly report of where audits stand, where fraud reports stand. I agree with Ms. Corbett Sanders. I don't want to see, you know, a journal entry of every single investigation, but I do think that there needs to be a quarterly report out to the Board that's not sifted through the committee. So I think it's reasonable once a quarter. This is, you know, this is our employee. We've established that this is an important role. And I think it's incumbent upon us to inform ourselves of something that we've decided is a critical enough role. It doesn't need to be utterly complex. It doesn't need to be particularly long, unless there's something. And there could be, there could be times where it's more complex and more in-depth. But I think it is a reason, it's, you know, kind of in the, you know, reasonable and prudent. Is it reasonable and prudent to be informed once a quarter by one of our employees of the status of the work he or she is doing? So I would say quarterly, and that, you know, it would be on an as-needed basis, should it be determined? You know, if there's something that, you know, warrants that makes it more often. But to say, you know, in, you know, two times a year, a readout to the full Board is suboptimal.
Okay, so quarterly, high level, more often, and more detail as needed. Does that sound accurate?
Totally.
Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
Yeah, I wanted to share that as well. I think given that audit, the Audit Committee has a lot of work on its plate. And from my own experience, having gone to audit committees, I appreciate that time is limited. And so quarterly just enables the other Board members to be able to interface with the Auditor General to get a summary of where we are. Like, I think it's just a good checkup point. So, and I also think it's a way of demonstrating to the public and to, yes, our funding authority, the Board supervisors, that are being able, as a full Board, saying, "Look, our Auditor General reports to us quarterly in addition to the Audit Committee's work." I think that would be very beneficial on many levels. So that would be my advocacy. And then I really do think that the Audit Committee has the expertise to say, "You know what? It's inside the window of a quarterly report, but we want to bring this to you." And that would be welcomed as well.
Thank you, Ms. Evans.
I'm going to agree. I think a quarterly report makes sense. I think probably just putting, you know, having it in writing directly from the Auditor General and maybe referenced in chair notes, so, you know, people know to look for it. Probably on a, whatever makes sense. You know, the Audit Committee can figure out what the reporting. what the reporting, um, timing is for it. And then, um, I, I'm going to agree with, people have spoken previously too, that when there's something that rises to the level, that it needs the Board's full attention and a discussion, then the Audit Committee can bring that to a work session as, as they, they see fit.
Okay, all right. And did you want to add anything, Ms. Weatherman?
No, what we, what you've been talking about is what you typically see. You see one of two types of reports. Is either an annual report of the work of the office, and that usually takes place when the Audit Committees don't meet on a monthly basis. And then quarterly reports. And the quarterly report would probably work better to provide you with more timely discussion points of the salient items that come across. The little things that Ms. Corbett Sanders was referring to, the business process turnover audits, the little audits, they would just be, we did this many, we're good, there's nothing significant. But here are the significant issues that, that have been reported on, or the larger audits that have been done, a- as well as the combination of, you know, what's come across the hotline and those types of things as well. So quarterly makes sense.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Oh, yeah, I apologize for the go back, but, uh, I think I wasn't necessarily clear where some of our colleagues were on this. I sort of had just envisioned that with our work sessions, when I said quarterly, that the auditor would, you know, post the written quarterly report, but that they would come and just give a briefing, whether it's 30 minutes or whatever, they can work that out with the Chair. But I kind of liked the idea that beyond just a report that might go sit in an inbox, that we would just get that touch point quarterly at an actual work session.
Yeah, I think that's what I was assuming too, is that it would be at a work session, Ms. Evans, right? That we would, four times a year, fit an, an AG report into our work session.
That, that's what I had, I thought, I mean, that's what I was promoting.
Right, okay. Jeanette?
Yes, so, uh, thank you, this is something I've been advocating for since January of 2016. So, um, I think too, we would find that this is probably what we almost do in practice between the auditor coming to Board about that, when we make the decision on the annual plan. And then when different, uh, performance audits come up, that the Board, the Audit Committee has determined as a whole that the Board wants to see. I think this would be the type of timing we're looking at. What I appreciate about this is, I think it helps our Auditor General and the Office plan for it as part of the work plan, as Ms. Corbett Sanders mentioned. And I think it helps our Chair and Vice Chair in their planning of the school year calendar. So I just think it makes everything a little bit smoother. I think it's a good practice, and I hope that we'll support this.
Uh, Karen?
I'm fine with two or four times a year, but the one thing I would suggest is that we then need to look at our work calendar and say, what are we taking off of our work calendar, folks? Because, um, we keep adding more on. And I would rather see us be very focused and effective at what we're doing rather than just, um, trying to rush through and having meetings going until eight or 10 o'clock at night and us losing, running out of steam and not being as effective. So I would encourage that as part of our, um, retreat in July, that we look at our work calendar and say, what do we, what is the appropriate role of the Board? And what are the things that we maybe shouldn't be, um, diving into quite as much?
And, and I agree, Ms. Heinz, if you don't mind. I, I agree, but, and I, and that's what I'm saying. I think if we were to go back and look at this past year, that we'll find that the Audit Committee about had that many, or the Board about had that many work sessions on the Audit Committee. But what's happening is that we're always adding it in. And I actually think that makes us less efficient than if it's a planned-upon thing. I mean, even this conversation here, if we knew it was part of the quarterly, we would have just said, "That's going to be part of the quarterly report from the AG." I think it's happening, I just think it's happening as an add-on versus a, a well-thought-out plan of governance.
Teresa?
I just want to, I have a clarification question. I'm envisioning, and please correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, that the reports will be presented in detail to the Audit Committee. In this summary report, it would be a highlight of the work. And anything significant will be highlighted, but it's not a rehash or presentation of the work the Committee has already done. So we're looking at a shorter timeframe, I would hope. Um, so that should make us a little more efficient. And as long as this quarterly report is posted timely, that should give you a little bit of lead time for some questions that you could develop. Because you can always, as a Board, as you review our reports, you can always send questions about the reports to us, and we can address those. Because the responses would then come to the entire Committee and to the individual, you know, asking the report. So it wouldn't be a rehash or a re-presentation, but a summary. Uh, is, am I correct in that assumption?
That's my assumption, is that we would continue to bring the same work to the Audit Committee. It wouldn't be that we would bypass the Audit Committee with any reports. The Audit Committee would still look at them, and then there would be a summary for the full Board. And the Board would have to be somewhat disciplined about time at that point, yeah, but, you know. Um, no, I think we can always, you know, be looking at our calendar. I agree, that's a challenge. But, you know, maybe we'll be able to take off, uh, looking for an Auditor General and a Superintendent off our calendar pretty soon. Anyway, um, so, what I'd like to know now then, I feel like I have some guidance to take to the new Auditor General, who, and I, I think, I don't know. So, this is, this is the guidance that I have from the Board right now, and correct me if I'm wrong. Raise hands if you think that we ought to put this in the annual audit plan. We include in the annual, as, as Karen said, include in the annual audit plan, we will have quarterly reports by the AG to the full Board. And these, these are the things that will be in those quarterly reports. Does that make sense? Okay, yes, Dahlia?
Clarifying question, and I was, after Ms. Huff spoke, I went back and counted how many work sessions we had this year for audit, and I believe they're around five. So I guess my question is, the report, when there are other things that need to be addressed related to the audit, I assume they can, we can try to combine them so that a, a quarterly report will not be in addition to other audit work that's coming to the Board?
I, I would hope that we could do that, yeah, right, yeah. No, good, good point. All right, and then it sounds like most people would like to see four quarterly. Show of hands on quarterly, okay. So put it in the, put it in the annual audit plan, quarterly reports. And then I think we can work with Teresa and the new AG, I guess, for some detail about what we expect. But they're basically high-level reports on activities of the office, right?
At the next Audit Committee meeting, I can bring a copy of one that we did in the past. That would be a starting point for the Audit Committee to decide, is this what they're looking for?
Great, thank you.
The format and things may change, but at least the topical points.
Great, all right, so, anything else? All right, thank you all very much. This work session is over. And, uh, thank you, John and Teresa.